The Port of Olympia Commission and our Community Advisory Committee, and it's a work session. So we're really glad to meet with you today and to hear from you what you have in store. We do have an official agenda for today's meeting. Before we always forget, Joel, would you lead us in pledging allegiance?
Absolutely. I mean, the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our agenda is really focused on hearing from the Community Advisory Committee and talking to them. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda? To approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? The motion carries. With that, I'd like to welcome the Chair of the Port of Olympia Citizen or Community Advisory Committee, Joel Hansen, to make an update and then preside over the next subcommittee updates.
Okay. Well, I don't really have much of an update today because I really want to get to the meat of the meeting. So we'll just consider that done and go right into subcommittee meetings. I don't see Bob Wobbin here to present the butt inlet subcommittee. Was somebody else going to do that or should we just put them out of order and go with somebody else?
I don't know where they are. I'm the only one here from the committee. And Sean.
Why don't we start with the Destination Waterfront Subcommittee work? And we can circle back to butt inlet if Bob shows up.
That's fine with me.
That's fine. Good. Okay. Perfect. And in your packet in front of you, you'll find three updates from the three subcommittees. And so there's. I'm going to call.
Before we get started, I want to thank everyone for showing up today and listening to our presentation. As volunteers, we put quite a few hours into this over the period of the last two years. And well, this resonates with you. All right, that's who we are, Destination Waterfront Subcommittee. We report to the POCA, Joel and Doug. There are smiling faces. The attendance of people are here to give you trouble. So in 2050, so this is something new from the last presentation. Now, Mike was kind enough to get us to try to connect this presentation into Vision 2050. You guys recently reaffirmed it and we want to make sure that there's connectivity to that project. It's everyone you've been putting a lot of time and effort into. So some of the action plan items in there, you can see marine and boat works. You have these links connection between Swan Town and Port Downtown area. And Destination Waterfront established a subcommittee under POCA to develop water destination opportunities. Now, I think we talked about, you know, you guys, Mission hasn't been sending us work projects, right? But you have approved these subcommittees, the existence of these subcommittees. So, you know, under those subcommittees, you know, we kind of ran with it as you might say. This slide is important for only one reason. This is kind of just a simple slide. This is a slide just to let you know that this presentation was made in a similar form back in June 20th of 2023. This is almost two years gone by since we made the initial presentation. So this is the area that we integrated Master Plan, that's gone, right? And is that correct, Alex? Yeah, okay. And so, yeah, so, you know, our thoughts are in line with this area. However, most of our focus has been on Site A and Site B. So we'll go into that in more detail. See Site A is down nearby, farthest fire, and Site B are the caps, the little caps. So we look at the feedback, community feedback for Vision 2050, you know, there were questions and takeaway. And, you know, what opportunities would benefit the community? Were public access and amenities, educational opportunities, local business, arts and entertainment? So what we're hoping to propose to you today is those points. Question five takeaway, ways the plan can provide public access to water. I think Mike was talking recently about, you know, marine resources, small boat resources, then the walking trail, incorporate public access parks, green space and plazas, community sailing and event center, and consider environmental remedia and stewardship. The idea of incorporating public access parks, green space and plazas, and extending the walking trail, kind of where we focused on. The Destination Waterfront, the outcome statement. The Port Peninsula develops a Destination Waterfront that offers restaurants, recreation, public art, combination, visitor combination, gathering, while ensuring connectivity with the water near shore and existing downtown core. So I think we want an inviting and walkable environment. We were talking about the Waterfront Center recently, having a hospitality tenant there for the downtown marine offices. And that's an ongoing discussion. Understand, right?
And this is your outcome statement that you developed?
Yes. This comes out of Vision 2050. About, but yes, I mean, that's how we would, you know, we rolled it up into those. And, you know, I think that we've had, we've made some progress regarding interpretive and educational ways down on Site A. That really helped change the owner of that area a little more enjoyable. But I think there's a lot of opportunity there for further improvements. And then, of course, you know, with conversations we're having regarding the Waterfront Center, you've got to take into account sea level rise, climate cleanup and restoration efforts, which I'm sure Bob, when he has his chance. Okay, so this is how we distilled our assignment. This is, this is, this is really the core of it. What low-cost interim steps can be taken, making progress in creating the plan that will demonstrate to Thurston County citizens that the port is committed to providing public access and other amenities?
Can I ask a question? How did you guys come to the question? Because we as a commission, I want to apologize, didn't provide assignments, which we said we would. And so did you guys talk about this within your committee and come up with this question? Or how did you come up with the assignment?
Okay, that's a good question. You know, Vision 2050, you know, I think speaks really directly to us about public access. I don't think, we wouldn't be doing our job if we ignored it. You know, the things that are in that Vision 2050, you know, give us some direction. It's a survey, so it's directional as to, you know, what we should be doing with the area and the space that we have. So reading, reading into that and then, you know, listening and running it by people here in our POCA, that's how we came up with that. Nothing that we are presenting here hasn't been presented to POCA. Does that help?
Yeah, I just, I think as much as anything, the mission, my words were clear is kind. And you guys have been so generous with your time in this transition, but I don't feel like we've clearly communicated back. So understanding what your process has been so that we can all get in alignment, I think will, I want to make sure that white papers and binder projects, that was some of the feedback from some of the POCA before that these things were just living on a shelf and we weren't actually utilizing them. So framing the question was just as important as the answer. So I just wanted to understand how you got to the question.
Yeah, I think if, I think if we all were given an opportunity to say what's important to the community, you know, parks and recreational opportunities, I think really are important to, not just the boating community, but to the entire public. And that would really be providing a service to the community. So let's move on.
I just want to highlight a point in there that I think is really important. I think the committee also identified things that are able to be accomplished in the near term and able to demonstrate to the community that the port is listening, the port is taking action. You know, the community didn't said, say, do a feasibility study. They said, we want access.
Yeah, we'll touch on that as we go forward. Destination Waterfront recommendations. Billy Frank Trail enhancements, we believe there's some ways to enhance the trail to grow it, make it more accessible to people. I think a lot of the Vision 2050 responses came down with developing partnerships for the City of Olympia, watercraft community groups to explore opportunities for community amenities. I don't think we can ignore that, and I think it's an important part of the Destination Waterfront. It is a port, you know. And Billy Frank Junior Park and North Point Events Center improvements, and that's the Holbrook Building. I believe we sent all of you our recommendation regarding the Holbrook Building. Hopefully, people have seen it and read it and understand where we're coming from with regard to that. A great opportunity for the community, you know, to have some, have some presence, the port to have some presence in regards to its history and also emphasizing the, really the natural beauty of the area. We'll go into more about that in a little bit. Now, Billy Frank Trail enhancements, improve the trail, landscape it. What's happening, installing Billy Frank Junior kiosks and signs. We've seen that occur. That was an excellent project, excellent result. Parking is an issue. Need to talk about that at some point in time in the future. Surfaces uneven in places and my sources, you know, it may not be ADA accessible, maybe, but I think that's something we, you know, how do the people who are disabled, how do they utilize our facilities? And I think that's really important. Many information and the signage up there is dated and could be improved. But next steps to improve signage, landscaping, connect the parking lot on North End and make ADA accessible. There's a trail in yellow, like not a very good yellow.
Can you see it on your map? On your maps, because it's just little dotted line.
It is, I've walked that trail, I don't know, fifty times, fifty years, and it's a really nice walk. So I think like everything else, you know, we got to consider, you know, how do we grow it and improve it? And here's some pictures of that trail. Well, boating and sailing community amenities, we heard this loud and clear from the boating and sailing communities. Will the port work with partner organizations, develop recommendations for location and features of, that would provide water access to small boats, kayak canoes, paddleboard, dragon boats and other water craft? I think that's under discussion. We met with, with Community Sailing, Southside Sailing Society, City of Olympia staff and Port staff to identify short and long lawns. Really, nothing really hard came out of that meeting, but we knew that they had an interest because some of their leases were expiring, they were looking for space. And I don't know where that discussion has gone since then. Port had installed paddleboard and kayak stands at Swan Town Marina, which is a positive. So I think in regards to the sailing community, you know, it may be advantageous to sit down with them and try to learn more about what their plans are and what they need, unless that's already been ongoing. And explore with the City of Olympia options for cooperation. I think if you're developing parks, City of Olympia has experts. I think we would be remiss if we didn't try to engage with them and try to help us how we improve this. I think something good with the parks, when we went up to Bellham, if I'm not mistaken. And Billy Frank Junior Park and North Point Community Events Center improvement. So we know we have a building down there, we know you guys, I know the port owns it. So we want to see if we could do something with that building to enhance public's access and to public's knowledge regarding the port's history, the importance of the port and the natural beauty of the area. and the natural beauty of the area. And I, and I believe we have connections in the community that could help us with that. I think that's a, uh, an opportunity. Uh, also additional landscaping and other enhancements, which is better picnic tables, children play structures, things along those lines. Parking is a big issue. You know, I've talked to neighbor a little bit about, you know, the amphitheater, trying to improve that. Uh, that's really success with groups trying to, you know, groups utilizing that space for concerts. So, you know, maybe a step, another step in that direction to encourage people to use it. And then also, you know, obtain public input, uh, into what they, what the public would actually directly want down there at Site A. What they, what, 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 what would they really want to see there?
The bathroom.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this side A, I'll go back. Yeah, if you have kids and you have people visiting your place, you need to have a bathroom. It's portable or not, you know, you want to encourage people to use it. You got to provide them some sort of services. This is the area we're close. We're not, we don't, we don't believe we need to include the K G Y building in any of this. So this was kind of a rough sketch that Darlene did as to what a community center might look like. Obviously, the footprint of our, um, building doesn't match that. But it gives you some ideas of, of the information that could, we, we know we could, uh, buy to the people, to the public. Maritime history, wildlife, East Olympia history. Early Olympia history, East Olympia, I guess. Indigenous, indigenous people and future, and future port expansion. So those are some of the things that you might be able to utilize community center for.
And with, uh, this is just Darlene's sketch, but the way you, some of you have been in that building. Uh, it has different offices that are some pretty substantially sized. So some of those could be used by different of these organizations. Like the South Sound Sailing Club or the, uh, the Maritime, what's that called? What's it called?
The Maritime.
Maritime historical.
When I did this little drawing, I had not been on the inside of the building. But I knew that there was two bathrooms and I knew there was office spaces, so I just kind of had to guess. But the main idea is to show that the use of the space can be multiple directions. And the fact that it's already got bathrooms there that solves your bathroom problem. Yeah, you know, it's a building that already exists. It's got a lot of space in there for, you could have a common area for like the news of, um, parties or weddings or birthday parties or celebration of family, get togethers, that sort of thing. On the other side, you still have an area that you could have separate so that it isn't interfering with. Maybe there's a gathering going on on one side, but you can still have the other side open for other little rooms that you could put stuff in.
Before we move on, are we able to speak, Alex, at all about potential, how staff is looking at this building right now? I know that, I know there's not a desire to hold buildings vacant if they can be put into use, but would you like to update?
And so there's an alternative option for the whole world building, at least for the interim, is, um, to have some of our staff and moving from a different building, we're actually paying rent. Um, and it would help serve some of the need of having somebody occupy that building. So it's.
Yeah, it's not good to have any building.
Yeah. Um, and I think it's, it's something that would be a cost savings for us by moving folks out there and then also the security benefit. So that's sort of a competing idea that's out there right now that we've been talking to the commission about.
Would, um, if, if staff were to be moved to that building, would the ultimate intention be that, that those staff members end up in the new administration?
Yeah, so it's a temporary. It would only be through next summer when we'd be ready to move.
And that's, as a commission, we've been talking about how we better integrate and align with the POCCAC so that we're all, we, we are all working together so that you guys aren't spending all energy on a building, but maybe there's a competing staff need for, um, and so that's, we've been talking about having switching that's been beaten on the POCCAC if you would be open to that, um, so that there can be better direct communications. We're not missing other.
Yeah, clearly you have to weigh and balance the benefit of port versus community center. If you do this, how, how long you take it out of service and how many people are you going to service? Um, you know, what's the cost savings versus what's the loss of opportunities? Those, those are the things you're going to have to deal with.
Having a port commissioner at our POCCAC meetings would help, I think tremendously. So that we don't get steered down rabbit hole. And informed, and you can stand informed on what we're doing.
Okay, so this is North Point area. You want to take it from here?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Okay. So that first slide, go back please. That, this slide is, it's one of the fourth. Oh, goodness. Okay. My hand worked. Okay, that's the problem. This is the North Port area before the new signage. And we were all down there for that, um, you know, ribbon cutting for the signs and all that. That was a wonderful day. So this is after the new signage. So not only the Billy Frank Junior signage, but then also the, um, Black Hills Audubon uh, Society Wildlife signage. So that, and that really is contributing, I think, significantly.
Good question, Debbie, for everyone here. Have people gotten any feedback from the community about the signage or particularly in the field?
I've heard from some folks about it. That, that they're impressed and that the Billy Frank Junior in particular, um, people expressed they really like it.
That point, um, is a major bird, uh, site. Members of the club and general public are out there frequently. And they've given me feedback on the signage. They love it, you know, so that, that, that point is, uh, you're very active in regards to wilds. We'll see a little more about that.
So these are, uh, you saw these, uh, two years ago, but these are just some of the wildlife that have been, uh, uh, photographed down there by, uh, by himself and people have seen them. Here are more.
Postcards. No, I'm serious. Those are cool.
Caspian turns are down there now.
They are?
Yeah, I'd be interested to see, see them at the point.
Which of those are the Caspian turn?
The back one. That bird on the right.
They're the noisy ones.
So people come down there to see these, uh, these birds and mammals. One is even more. So, uh, other, other ports in the region recognize the benefits of adding these public amenities, uh, to their working waterfront. So our question is, why haven't we? Why hasn't the Port of Olympia? So the benefits are, um, these amenities are, uh, direct tangible, uh, benefit to the port taxpayers. And, uh, these amenities also, uh, increase tourist revenues for area businesses and this. And it provides the port with lease revenue.
Where would the lease revenues be from?
If you add in, um, what I've seen in some of these other slides, like the Port of Bellingham where you guys visited. They have the, um,
Commercial buildings alongside.
They have the pasting for, for the winery. You have the.
The amenities that are alongside the.
You have to look at it as a whole.
Yes.
Not necessarily right at this point.
Okay.
Other, other locations along the way.
Tracking, just making sure.
And so, um, examples, uh, include the urban, uh, working waterfront ports of Bellingham and Everett, Vancouver, Tacoma, Silverdale, Seattle. And then, uh, a non-urban but super busy river port is Kalama. And I think some of you've been on a trip, field trip down to there. And most of these, um, public amenities are on sites that, uh, were formerly contaminated and have been, uh, remediated. And that one in the picture is, uh, the Yomish River People's Park and Shoreline Habitat. You see how they've made these raised walking trails and, uh, restored a marsh and have, uh, up in the area to launch, uh, hand-carried boats. And this, uh, I know a bunch of you went up to Port of Bellingham and this is where they've developed thirty-three acres of parks and trails and six acres of restored, uh, public beach. There's a video, but I showed it to you before. I don't remember that video with the, the uh, skateboarding and all that with ramps and everything. Um, and that's a picture of it at night. So you can see it's a public and private venture. It has, uh, food trucks and shops and that dirt bike course and the brewery, K C, the wine tasting, all of those, uh, uh, amenities in that public, private partnership. And then the Port of Everett, I know, we've been up there to that port. That one, uh, has six different parks and plazas. And, um, the newest one is this picture here on the right, the Box Car Park. And, um, over here on the, on the left, that rendering, um, shows the historic warehouse or building um, with a red roof in the, in the background, uh, which is now a, a coffee and whiskey bar. So that's a private enterprise, but on port, port land. And then, uh, Port of Kalama, I know a bunch of you've been down there. Um, they have this Weston, Weston Amphitheater, which is over here on the right side. And it's adjacent to the Marine Park. And this is one of three parks at the Port of Kalama, right along the river there. And two of the parks have ball fields. And like I said, they're all on the river and they all have, uh, rest being access. And then they have that riverboat that you can take tours. That's what that is in the, in the background. And then Port of Vancouver, they've partnered, uh, in a, a private, um, public venture. And they've created, uh, this big master plan for seven, three acres for a new community park. And, uh, Jim Thornton, we're here today. He could tell you a lot about this. I think he mentioned. Remember, I don't know if you remember how we talked about how they did all this remediation and they moved railroad tracks and all this to make this wonderful, um, wonderful park and still have the working waterfront right there on the Columbia River. And then Port of Tacoma, uh, they have done this big habitat restoration project. Uh, the, this big dormer project, and it has a kayak, uh, launch and has concrete ramps, um, for easy access. I'll put their kayaks down to the shore for the inner part of Communist Bay or just to walk along the shoreline. And then they also have this Julia Gulch, which is thirty-one acres of forested open space. And it was purchased by the Port of Tacoma and it serves as a buffer between the port's, uh, industrial area and northeast Tacoma, which is residential. Um, and so it's got a network of, uh, urban trails and, uh, native plants. It's just awesome. I've been to it several times. And then over in Silverdale, um, they have their, they have a county playground. And it's adjacent to the main pier there at the Port of Seattle. And, uh, they can play on that playground and then they can beach comb on the shores. And that, that park had several, uh, facilities and gazebos and covered, uh, areas for parties. This is, uh, more on scale of what we were thinking about for Side A. Right down there by the Billy Frank, uh, park, where you would have a playground and you'd have a picnic area. Okay, so this would be a way, a smaller and more, uh, immediate, something you could do in the near term without a lot of pub, uh, private, public partnership and a lot of revenue that would be, you know, need to be generated like some of those other previous ones. In Port of Seattle, they have over, uh, sixty parks and public, uh, access areas including bike trails and pedestrian trails and areas and habitat restoration and fishing piers. All kinds of shoreline access. And so, uh, now we're back to revisiting our question, which is again, what uh, low-cost interim steps can be taken, uh, to make progress in implementing the destination waterfront plan that will demonstrate to the Thurston County citizens that the port is committed to improving, uh, public access and other amenities.
So to further what Debbie was saying, um, you know, uh, you can energize Vision 2050 by moving forward with not, not, not expensive, but some interim steps in regards to improving the park. You may, you know, you announce to the public that there's going to be public space. And over time, you're going to approve it. That, that's a statement to the public that they have real value in that space and that you're going to provide over time. You know, improvements like, you know, we talked about play areas and things like that. So things can be budgeted on an annual basis, developed and brought forward. It has to be managed, make sure it gets done. But those are the type of things that will attract people down to that area and give, and give the port some, some, you know, good publicity, you know? And also to energize that Vision 2050 and tell people, hey, we're listening to you. We understand what, we understand what you want. So, uh, the Holbrook Building is part of that. It's been used on an interim basis as a community center. Just in closing, I want to thank you all for listening to us and reflecting on this. And, uh, you know, you're very busy. And I want to thank Darlene, Debbie, we couldn't have done this without them. And, uh, they, they just, uh, it's just a great group to work with. Of all the things that have, I've done here, getting to know these two would make the best part.
We paid him to say.
Thank you. Should we, um, hold until we get through all three presentations and then we'll have, according to the agenda, just wide-ranging discussion?
Do you want to do questions now or questions later? Follow it with me.
Let's move on then to another one and then come back.
Anthony, do you want to do the, uh, sure, Economic Development Subcommittee?
Yeah. We did a presentation to this. And in some ways we've covered that. We, we can do that again if people want to, uh, refresh, uh, or we can do it very quickly or we can just.
Never underestimate the power of a reporter.
Okay, uh, fine. Yeah, uh, we talked about a, a five, uh, five-point, uh, work plan, uh, that, that we'd be great. I will go through the PowerPoint. Appreciate it. A five-point work plan, uh, for the Economic Development Committee. And we don't have really nice pictures, uh, but, uh, but our, our committee is Quentin, uh, who people probably, probably won't recognize with that, with that fantastic new haircut. I, Debbie, Don, Joel and myself. And we looked at a, at a, a five-point, uh, work plan. First off, I developed a, a charter for the Subcommittee itself. Uh, and I, it's, it's been great having, uh, Mike Reed, uh, be our, our, our new, uh, new staff liaison. I, and, uh, and, and Mike helped to suggest this as well as a, as a framework. And and Mike helped suggest this as well as a framework. And then, different aspects of economic development that we're looking, that each focus on different goals. In 2050 as well. First off, working to identify what's going on with the terminal operations. Secondly, exploring the potential for passenger ferry service. And and on this, because obviously staff and and the commission and POCAP members. It's a lot of time that goes into POCAP. And and most ports don't have something quite like POCAP. But would point to to this, the passenger ferry service, as something that's very tangible. That has helped, helped spur. A new potential thing for for the Ford. And that one, one thing that the POCAP members do do bring to the port is both ideas and connections. And and the electric oil. Passenger ferries, that idea was first germinated. Economic Development Committee, and from that, we helped. That was the first step in getting Artemis to include Olympia in their recent visit to. Washington State here just just last month.
Which is awesome.
Yes, yes. And yeah, and and they're they're real prospects with that. And Artemis was very excited about that, and they did say that the Port of Olympia visit was was one of their best visits here in Washington State. Also, looking at opportunities to increase the community and economic value of the Olympia Regional Airport. And on that, at our at our next meeting, we'll be having one of the founders of one of these. Electric vertical pick-up and landing companies that they'll be joining us. And discussing their technology and how that could work in a place like Olympia. Which again, we think has has fantastic potential here. In zero emission. And and since it's electric, their their cost of service is a fraction of what's what point using that fuel. And then also, we're not the first people to do this. And we are trying to stand on the shoulders of giants of POCAP in the past, and a lot of work has been done. Off some of those those reports that have been done in the past. And and look, look at those that are within our area. That that we might be able to update and use for the future. And and he's been a great, great bridge on that. And then we'll we'll also mention that just in recent days. I talked with Captain Yomas on a variety of topics. And he was, he was talking about R99, a much cleaner fuel. That could reduce emissions at the Marine Terminal by about seventy percent. And he was saying that Tacoma and Longview have adopted. He said that that was something that he would like to sink some more time into. Also, Option is pulled in forty directions and he doesn't have other staff to really. Title this too, and he was suggesting that that might be something the Economic Development that he could look at as well. And that Option has been great. He's joined us for a few committee meetings in the past as a subject matter expert. And again, just a great person to knock ideas around with. And and he knows our our committee members. Don is just fantastic at econometric studies and the like. And might be worth leaning on Don and other other members. Do a quick analysis of if that might be something. But that could be another task that could be a natural for the Economic Development Committee that that could.
Anthony, what percentage of reduction?
Seven zero. Yeah, so very substantial. Oh, yes, thank you. We had a very interesting discussion on foreign trade zones at. A long time ago, but yeah, just a few weeks ago. And the, and and trying to leverage the foreign trade zone that we already have right now. And also the the need for bonded warehouses and the thing that that could. I help support it in a variety of ways, and that there is no bonded warehouse capacity right now, as you probably know from the real estate. But that, if we had a bonded warehouse that was available, that would both spur more interest in the foreign trade zone generally. And potentially the Marine Terminal specifically as well.
Anthony, could you say a sentence about what a bonded warehouse is?
Yeah. I, things, things that come into a bonded warehouse. I don't have to pay duty tariffs until until they exit.
So it's a special technical term for something used as in a foreign trade zone context?
Yes, and 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 they're strictly controlled as well. So it's it's another level of of checking in and the like, but it can it can save. Especially in a crazy tariff environment right now. It can potentially save companies considerable amounts if if tariffs are coming down. Of course, if tariffs go up, it's somewhat at the casino right now. Of, but, but if they, if they have the ability to wait. Many companies would like that option on deciding when to take something out of the warehouse.
It's essentially like within the warehouse, there's razor wire and video cameras around the section that is controlled. And then the rest of the warehouse is not, but that, there's users in our market. That's how it's, it's like a little section of their warehouse. So.
This is one example, if a if a company were bringing in a bunch of of some sort. Rather than paying the tariff when the ship lands and the product goes through customs. They could put it in a bonded warehouse and as they sell product, then pay the tariffs when they've already got a sale. And are taking it out of the warehouse to deliver it. So maybe not on the whole shipment at once, but only as they sell product.
Spread out the. It's very impactful for those people that use it, very.
Is there like a turnaround period or a turnover period that? Those products sit in the warehouse?
Like one of the people is wine, and they have wine that's been sitting there for years. And then the mint oil can sit there for years also, so it's. Examples here are not necessarily quick.
So who owns the product when it's in the warehouse?
It's owned by the owner of like Grand Vin or Callison's, but they just haven't. They haven't paid the fee. But they've purchased it from the where they bought it from already. It's not considered to be in the same as it exits.
Mike Reed.
I just can't help myself. So I gave a presentation to the Economic Development Committee at that last meeting. We did talk about a couple of these things. I am giving a presentation. We're scheduled for July. July eleventh, or July meeting, July 11th is a Friday. July 14th, I will be giving the Commission a presentation on foreign trade zones. Not surprisingly, with everything that's going on, there's been a a pretty significant increase of interest. The Port of Olympia has managed a foreign trade zone, Foreign Trade Zone 216. We we are the grantee for that and have been since the mid nineties. Most of the time, we have only had two customers. It's just a very, foreign trade zones are a very complex federal designation. And we manage it for a four-county region. And then the, and it has to do with duty, like duty deferral or tariff deferral and and processes like that. Bonded warehouses are another tool that's similar to foreign trade zones, but has some different things. There is not currently a bonded warehouse in Thurston County. My understanding is the last bonded warehouse that we actually had. We had the Marine Terminal actually had a bonded warehouse designation. There was a specific customer, I think at the time, that was using it in that fashion, and it's since lapsed. But there are some bonded warehouses in Pierce County.
It's a technical term for something that functions the same as a foreign trade zone, but it's different.
Yeah, they can do similar things. Not everywhere a foreign trade zone is available. But theoretically, you can go through the process. Both of these have to do with interfacing with Customs and Border Patrol. So they're all tied into that sort of process, but.
So you wouldn't consider the property, the foreign trade zone a bonded warehouse? You would consider it's two separate.
Separate things. And a foreign trade zone requires, it's a geographical designation. And a bonded warehouse, that actually can be done by the, and a foreign trade zone has to be operated. There's limitations on who the grantee could be. Ports are one of those allowed entities to be a foreign trade zone. A bonded warehouse can be done by the private sector. So they're just different tools, and there are different, there are little minor differences in in their impact.
It sounds like the bonded warehouse could be part of our current warehouses.
Sure.
One or maybe the temporary.
So we, we just talked about these different tools, and I will just tell you, I I am responding to a lot of calls. And interests in our foreign trade zone right now. We just approved a potential, we reactivated an old user. And we have a new user in within application.
How long does it take from application to approval to get a foreign trade zone with us?
It, it, well, we submitted a letter to the National Foreign Trade Zone Board.
Oh, sure.
Three weeks ago, and we are, we should have an answer in the, within another three weeks. So it should be about a month and a half.
I think we should tune in in a couple of weeks for more on that and continue in our deliver today. Very exciting. All right, and I'll hand it back to you, Joel.
Okay, Anthony, I believe that's it, unless members, if there's anything else.
Well, we held questions on the first, so.
We'll hold questions.
Right back.
And then I'll I'll turn it over to Bob Wobena to speak to the. We're calling it the Bud Inlet Subcommittee.
It's sedimentary, my dear.
Yes. And first of all, I apologize for not being here at five. I had, on my calendar, five thirty for some reason. I'm fifteen minutes early instead of fifteen minutes late. So anyway, I apologize for that. And our Subcommittee is made up of Pat Nood, who's an estuary fishery type expert. Jim Thornton, who's a sediment management hazardous waste type expert. Dr. Jack Havens, a veterinarian and fishery entrepreneur. And and then Sheila Wilson, who is a citizen activist and very much involved in in the activity. And I have many years of watershed planning, and we owned Fiddlehead Marina for forty years, so I know the waterfront quite well. So anyway, when we started this assignment on the Bud Inlet Subcommittee, there was confusion. We weren't sure what Bud Inlet. In terms of the project assignment. And and there's so much activity going on between the city and the state and other parties in terms of the waterfront. When you talk about like destination waterfront, who's waterfront? Port's waterfront, the the community waterfront, what was it? And so after many efforts talking around that, we basically started with the reclamation boundaries, which is a eastern boundary. Western boundary and northern boundary, and basically it's the larger marine water boundary. And our recommendation was that should be our area of evaluation and working on. Our assignment should be tied to that particular boundary. Otherwise, it's going to be confusing. Are we this part, that part, this part, what is? So we basically look at the marine waterfront from Squawson Island, Squawson Park, West Bay Marina to the bridge. Basically, that is the map. We had planned to have a map selected by now, but we've got some issues on meeting times and everything else. We're doing it tomorrow night. So after tomorrow night, we'll have the map better defined. Working with Sean Gilbertson, he's the one that's bringing the draft map to us. We'll work from there. Basically, after all of that activity, there are three focuses to our work plan. Number one is to define a, what we call a working map, a study map, a ongoing map. Basically, a single map that defines the playground that we're in, the working field that we're in. And so the same base on everything, so no matter what we're talking about, it would be a point of reference. So with the maps that Quentin and them put on there, that was basically the Port of Olympia's working, a destination waterfront. Parks and such as there. But just a short month or two ago, the city came out with a whole new park plan for the West Bay Park. I'd never seen it before. We've, I'm probably going to help point into that. But there was a lot of debate took place four, eight or nine years ago when we built that. Well, here is a whole new park plan that came out from the city that was in, I don't know if it was Jolt or Olympia, I forget which magazine it was in, or newspaper it's in. So so that was a park plan, well, is that the port's park plan? Well, the port has DNR lease land right over there, so what's the role of DNR and port there? So it's clarifying those types of things. Basically, there's a whole history of pieces of information. That the general public don't fully know who's responsible for what, the port or the city or DNR or somebody else. And so these mapping systems that we're putting forth, we're trying to be very clear about that. What is the port's focus of responsibility, but also what's going on by the other partners? So when the public looks at it, they see the whole picture. It's real clear what the port's primary responsibility is and what is somebody else's responsibility. You guys get blamed for everything. And and that's not fair, so how do we help minimize being blamed for everything?
I feel seen.
And the other part is, well, why did you contaminate the soil the way you did it? Well, decisions were made in legitimate time many years ago. So right now, what is the responsibility of the port, the city, DNR, and the other parties? And what are your programs and what programs are the reclamation project, what we started with? Reclamation project then gets into the issue of dredging. And where the dredge material is going to go? Are they going to go on port property? Are they going to go Eastern Washington? Are they going to go something else? So sorting these different technical issues out in the in the Bay Area. Against this map with some clarity, simple clarity of public information that you guys sign off on. So you are clearly have your fingerprints on what is your area responsibility and what's not your area responsibility. But if it's not your area responsibility, but it impacts you, the question is, what are the issues? And how do we help provide you background information so that you then go talk to the city or whomever you're going to be talking to? And that's working with Sean and your staff on that, is basically clarifying those kinds of dialogues that are going on. Another one that just came out just a couple of days ago was basically their article in the paper. About the seawater rise, seeing Olympia said, well, we're not going to sign on for FEMA. And the hundred-year flood plan issues. I have, I sort of understand it because I was impacted by it, and that's kind of my background. But I have no idea how that might affect the port or not affect the port. So what we see our committee doing is helping your staff address all of these kinds of issues and then to put some kind of definitional. So what we see our committee doing is helping your staff address all of these kinds of issues and then to put some kind of definitional positive information on how to help your staff and you as commissioners, guide your staff and what decisions you want to make. Basically, that's, that's how we now have narrowed down our assignment. We have three work plans objectives. One is the, the mapping that I just talked about. That's a map that will be a base map that will keep changing. We'll have different layers on it to show different kinds of information. But it would be standardized one. Will you go to your staff and say, I want to see that map on how the plan is on dealing with the dredge, dredge spoils or, or here comes the state's estuary project and here's what they're saying about it. How does that impact what the port's doing? So you can standardize mapping. Second part would be in terms of communications. Helping to your staff, we hear different things and each of us come from different interest groups around the community. We hear different comments being made. If we hear things that are, we know are represented wrongly to the general public, that's the kind of communications that we want to come back to your staff with and say, hey, we think it'd be helpful for you to, and your staff to communicate in this way to address these kind of issues. Again, so that you minimize the confusion and port being asked to do things that you can't or shouldn't. Or uh, the things that the port might be blamed for that's not your, not yours. So you carefully, carefully identify where the responsibility does lie. And you can start that communication. And the third step in the process is the actual re- helping your port reach out to the broader public so that they understand what the port is planning to do and how you're planning to do it. Based on whatever you guys sign off on on the program. So that's basically how we've narrowed it down in terms of our work plan. And that's what's articulated in the, in the documents that was handed out to tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I just realized that maybe mine and Sean aren't sitting there because they're staffing the computers, but just because they didn't know what to say. Would you like to join us up at the table? There are two seats here.
Best to have this between the commission and the advisory.
All right, um, so then, uh, how do you want to proceed? It's all, it's six o'clock. Do, I think we should give some time if there are top level issues people still have questions about from these three presentations. And so I'm going to just go round robin and actually, I think the POCAC may have questions as well about subcommittees. So we'll just go all around, but I'll start with Commissioner Harley.
So is this limited to questions about the presentation?
Yeah, before we go into the other discussion.
Not really comments, more just questions.
Discussion of the, of the subcommittees maybe? Because I think what you're, you're getting at is coming back around to a larger discussion after we.
Yeah, just, so we'll do the larger discussion, but first, are there lingering questions? Because we cut off the first one. I was worried for time. I just want to make sure everyone has their questions.
Hold, hold.
Any, any lingering questions? Okay, then to you, Joel, for the other.
Oh, you didn't get me. Sorry, I wasn't, I was looking the other way.
Uh, I just have a, a quick one, uh, and, and all, all of the presentations are outstanding. Uh, I appreciate all the work you guys put into it. Uh, on the, on the Bud Inlet Subcommittee, just a quick question. I'm, I'm not seeing anything. I, you know, I know the, the restoration um, uh, or the, the, the sediment cleanup that will lead to restoration and, and hopefully a cleaner Bud Inlet. Um, and, and I think the mapping sounds like a great idea. I'm just curious, I, I, I didn't hear anything, any mention of uh, uh, of the shipping channels and how that might, uh, you know, how, how we might incorporate that in, into uh, um, into this project if it belongs there or not. Is there any thoughts on?
Definitely, uh, the uh, uh, there are different documents out there and there can, there's different interpretations and and members of our committee have been part of this over the last five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so we know the debates that go on. And clearly, uh, at least from my perspective, is that the navigation channels that the port has roles in with the Corps of Engineers is clearly a marked defined area. There's also the, the city, marinas and the plaza is part of an extension of that navigation channel down to peripheral landing. Uh, that's an open area to the, on, and not yet on the map I saw, that wasn't even reflected. And, and so that's where I see the mapping coming into play. If we see items like that, we will be helping prepare recommended layers of, of that, just as, as you're talking about, making them very clear. And, and then as a part of that, then our discussion with your staff will be, well, who's responsible for that?
Yeah.
And, and as an example, and then another example is the recent uh, budget shifted the estuary project from DES to ecology. And I asked your staff the other day, what have you heard about that? At that point, they heard nothing. So.
It's not all shifted, some of it shifted.
Okay, well, see, well, we don't know what's shifted and what's not shifted. We only read certain documents and different people have different interpretations. So the question is, which interpretation do you listen to? So if we start putting that into a mapping understanding, we will expose confusion and confirm confusion. Yeah, and, and, but hopefully out of it will come a clear mapping system that we all think is the correct one, what that might mean. So the shipping, uh, the shipping channels is a good example. Another one in a conversation with uh, John just the other day, he said the findings of the early sampling on the east zone of the sampling are much better than they thought. And, and Jim Thornton, who's an expert in this, has always felt that the sediment should stay where it's at, not move it. And, and because of natural treatment that takes place on natural systems. So those are the kinds of, now that we, if this work plan is approved, you then that's the stuff that we're going to start elevating. We have a whole bunch of background documents that are considered members of our committee that act up what I'm saying, but you don't want to hear all the details now. It's too technical. Um, so, but, but policy related issues, we want to get them out there where it's clear. So you guys as commissioners can see the implications of it and then collectively you decide it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's helpful. I just want to.
I want to um, clarify some things. Um, first of all, Bob has done an excellent job with this group. He's, he kind of took it and ran with it. Um, there are some issues going on with the change of the guard in terms of the estuary project. And the legislature gave the environmental part of it to ecology. It's my understanding at this point, but none of that's, you know, touched out yet. But it's my understanding that DES will still be involved in terms of infrastructure. So how, how is that area going to be used um, as a facility? Because that's what DES does. It manages facilities. It doesn't manage natural environments. So when we started out, um, Sheila brought up the idea of doing a story map. Or trying to define all the issues that are going on with the Bud Inlet. Um, dredging, uh, legacy pollution, everything. How is the estuary going to, estuary restoration going to impact that area? Um, and there are so many questions and there's so much information that a story map would be a way to bring up the issues, ask the questions, get the public aware of all the things that have gone on. With a regular map that we have in place, the one Bob's talking about, but a story map is a you all familiar with what a story map is? You know, of like a PowerPoint presentation that runs along, one side is the story and the other side is the visual story. So it's words and, and pictures and it's a great way to um, address all of these issues that are coming up. Because we can, it's, it's a living thing. We can change it. And you can ask questions or answered. We can, you can make that available in the story map and it can go out to the public. So all these, these uh, these things that we have recommended are tied in together. Um, the map, story map, communication plan, the public forums or public um, citizen meetings where we can get together and talk. And now we're heading on to uh, West Bay. Results that are going on over there in the market, cleaning plans are going to have to happen and it's going to and then we're in, in this constant struggle with how much pollution is still entering the river from tires and from stormwater. So it's, it's a big, it's a big issue, no, no question. And it's complicated. It's not something we can just go, here it is. It's moving, it's moving target. One question I have about what you shared, Sue, um, DES had like consultant on board who's hopefully and sends all the changes that have happened and who was prepared and wanted materials. Um, the story map does seem like a really useful tool. What, do you see the POCAC sort of filling a void because no one else will carry the mantle of that communication or how do you see the POCAC's role compared to the DES project or others? The port. What's the port, what's the port's responsibility? How is the port interacting with estuary restoration? There's, there seems to be this uh, this feeling and I know there is with, with a lot of boat owners and things, Marina. That once the dam is out, it's doomsday, you know, because all this sed- sediment's going to come down and clog up the works. But um, there's a lot to know about that. It hasn't been, it's not that simple. Um, the Wake Basin now, the North Basin will be dredged out. You know, a lot before the dam comes out. So that sediment will be the background sediment that comes down from the river all the time. That will fan out into an estuarine environment. So you're going to have a larger estuary. I mean, if you, you've looked out at the low tide these last, this last week and seen, well, you know, sailboat that's been hit over because it was more than the wrong place. Um, you'll, you'll see that, that low tide area of influence there. Um, that will have a lot more flushing action once the dam's out, the river comes out. Um, it will move around. Um, it's not going to the, the the shipping channel is still going to have to be.
Part of the challenge too is nearly stages of the EIS for estuary project. They said, well, marine waters is not our, our, being the state was not our responsibility. We're, we're dealing with the freshwater and the estuary part of it. It was only later that they basically started taking and including marine water elements into the planning process. So then the port question back to there is, so what? When you, when you overlap, the state estuary project responsibilities are the dredging stuff that Sue just talked about. Where does the port's responsibility start and stop? And, and, and in those areas where there is overlap, there is, there is the agreement that's you sign and a lot of other people sign without any money in, in, in the dollar amount part of it as to responsibility. With the question, those are also have to be negotiated out. Who is responsible for keeping the shipping channel? With the non, having the non-Corps of Engineers stuff, but down to the personal plaza. Is that, whose responsibility is that and who's going to pay for that? Those are the questions that will come out of all of this. And, and if you pay attention to the reports that come out of the uh, might be in a jolt sometimes, it'd be an article about this part, an article about this part. Seldom is an article about the overlapping parts of it. And so the public then they start saying, oh, I, I read that. Yeah, that's, that's the answer. Well, Sue just said, it's not that simple. So we see our responsibility as a subcommittee is to help you understanding clearly what is a port's responsibility, is an overlap area of the port's responsibility. If it's not your responsibility, then it's your job as elected officials to negotiate that and whatever you want to with City of Olympia and the other entities involved. Well, our job is to help you make sure you clearly understand those.
But we have to know that that's the watershed. It's the watershed from the very beginning of the Deschutes River down to Boston Harbor. And it's all connected. So we can't just separate these things out into pieces. Because one thing's going to impact the next, you know? It all runs downstream. Okay, actually, that's a good transition, Joel.
Just, I, I want to give this subcommittee some credit. And one of my favorite Bill McGregor quotes is, is uh, fusion reigns supreme. And in the case of this, the, all these intersecting projects, it really does. People get an idea and then that's the, the answer, like Bob said, and, and it's not, it's complicated. There's all these levels of responsibility, all these projects that interact in different ways, but they all exist in a physical space. And so representing all those different pieces of information on a map um, as a story and, and, and they can pull information and to the map from DES, from the City of Olympia, from other partners. Um, but representing in that way, I think can help to really dispel some of the confusion um, about what's happening and get, get people more up to speed on, on the reality ongoing situation.
And to Bob's point, it's helping to better understand what isn't our project obligation, et cetera, which is a big part of what we are trying to communicate um, is what we're doing and what we're not and what's the port and what's not. And it's all integrated to your point, Sue, um, but selling that out.
Well, then as we move to the discussion part of the agenda and um, does anyone have a goal for when we adjourn today? It's six fourteen. Did we set a goal?
It was seven on the.
Seven, okay, thank you. Um, what we have then is a proposal of a work plan from the Bud Inlet team. We have um, the concepts that you briefed about Quentin. And then from the Economic Development Subcommittee. Sort of a five point program.
And we could as well. Something if, if you want to talk.
We also have a specific recommendation.
The whole book. Right.
Which you all have.
And so some of this is substantive, but also people are taking different approaches to like the process or how they would think of working with the commission. And maybe we have a chance to first start by um, talking about how we um, are seeing the, the value of this kind of connection, which I, and I'd like to articulate that myself. And, and then how we move forward with a port that is now finally fully staffed, you know, ready to rock, maybe not looking for just some of the easy wins, maybe looking to make some big steps forward. Um, that's enough context. So how do you, and does anyone want to proceed with uh, how, how are we envisioning having this conversation, Joel? Commissioner Evans, warning.
Well, I feel like this is stilling for the first time for me. So um, I just want to acknowledge that we said we were going to give the POCAC assignments and then we did not. And Commissioner Vasavada pointed out that that wasn't because we didn't care or we didn't want to. We were focusing on our core business operations when we had turnover and reestablishing of staff and we're all excited about where we're at. So you guys have done a lot of great work in the interim. Um, in my mind, this meeting is as much about getting an alignment uh, and having shared goals as, as it is about addressing these proposals as they are now. Um, to me, it's becoming clearer of our different roles for the first time. So the commission is governance and policymaking. We know that. The staff and the consultants are operations and um, making that policymaking happen. The POCAC is the implementation, integration and communication of those goals. And so I thought the Bud Inlet Subcommittee's um, items were more along that vein. Um, you, we, because it's something we've decided to implement on, we said, we're doing Bud Inlet cleanup. And so you were able to say, hey, here's what we're doing to the community. They don't understand how these different pieces work together. They, you know, these, you're, you're able to say, we need to communicate better on this. We need to have a storyboard on that. And that then helps with the implementation of something that the commission has already said, yes, we want to do this. So in contrast, I think that with the Economic Development Committee or, or the Destination Waterfront, because we didn't provide an assignment, then you created initiatives, right? Like using the whole brick building for something which may or may not compete with an operational interest that you wouldn't have known about because there wasn't that alignment. Or with economic development, there, there, maybe it's like creating new initiatives which might require policymaking and governance and then operations before we can get to the, to that next level. So in my mind, it's, it's focusing on that three legs of that stool so that each of these work plans can be tailored around things that have already been decided on by the commission that then are being operationalized by the staff and consultants. And then the POCAC, we're like, how do we implement this? How do we communicate it? And how do we integrate it with our jurisdictions? Which I'm super excited about because I feel like that actually can happen.
Well, that's one framework.
Okay. And maybe my fellow commissioners disagree with me.
That's really, it's nice to see it going. Maggie, let's go to you.
I would just like to ditto that framework because you just buttoned it up in perfect. Perfect polished picture of how I encapsulated the different work plans myself. So that, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And do you have a preferred approach or do you see room for both of them?
I just, I just am super glad that we're at this place right now where we can work with the POCAC. And I, I have the same sentiments that we haven't been given out assignments like it, it says in our ordinance or resolution. And so I feel like moving forward, we can solidify that by looking at the two different styles of presentations on how we can move forward as a, a POCAC. Because I, I agree with the governance policy level, the administration and the staff and the POCAC and how it all flows together in a cohesive way.
Okay, let's see, Commissioner Montana?
Yeah, I would agree with both Commissioner Harding and Commissioner Sanders. This does seem like a, a solid framework, but I think what led for me was the Destination Waterfront Subcommittee and the Holbrook Building and all that, just that you didn't really have enough information on the Holbrook Building operations side. So I think having that commissioner connection going forward will be huge, just so we can kind of get ahead of things like that. And then for Destination Waterfront, it's just tricky for me since it's part of the overall waterfront planning already. So I think that connection is also really needed with that subgroup. But I do agree that the real meat of the POCAC is to connect with the community and you all are doing a great job. And I think the story map is going to build that connection and there's ways that the other two old need that as well. So thank you all. Really great work.
Mr. Isle?
Oh geez, I really have nothing to add to that. It's a great, great comment so far.
I have a yes and to add a little bit in that, and, and I only sit on one subcommittee. So I, I'm speaking kind of from my view, sitting on the Economic Development Subcommittee. And I think that the connection with the community or with the greater world also includes identifying opportunities and bringing them back and passing them. So maybe it's not a, a linear thing, but it's more of a a circular where we can be bringing.
It's going to mirror the same.
Where, where the POCAC can be bringing information and feeding it into the, the place where staff works on it. And maybe it rises to the level of commissioners taking action at the policy level or not, which is perfectly acceptable as well. But being able to go out there and, and add to the capacity of the organization to, to grab ideas from the larger world and bring them back and say, well, does this work in our context or not? Well, I think is.
I, I think, I think that's a, a great point. And I, you know, I think one thing that I, I noticed about the presentations and, and the conversation today is that it does always refer back to Vision 2050, which I think was brilliant that we brought ourselves back to this. And so I would just comment that, you know, along with Vision 2050, I think we keep in mind the port's mission. And that should help, help all of us, help guide all of us into, into these projects.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your comments. As far as what we proposed, you know, I haven't seen any, no one's given us any update on the integrated master plan. I don't know where it stands. I don't know where it's going. And in lieu of that, in the interim, there's no reason why we can't pick up a few small things and do it for the public. I know it's not part, it wouldn't be included in, you know, as part of the overall master plan. But I, I'm just saying you need to keep it simple. You, you need to reach out to the public in, in, in really material ways and show them that you really are listening to them. You know, i- if you don't do that and you continue to push this out, you're going to continue to get pu- pushback from the public. Because they're not going to see anything happening. So it may not seem like, it may seem like it's out of, outside of the, the boundaries of, of this, of this plan, or it might be. I strongly suggest and, and, and hope that you could, you know, internalize this and actually put some things in the budget that people can actually enjoy.
I think that is, I would say a yes and because in my mind, the recommendation of enhancements on Billy Frank Jr. Trail very much fits into the implementation, communication, what you're hearing from the community and is something that we could execute on. In my mind, obviously I'm one commissioner. So I hope it didn't sound like because we couldn't execute on the Holbrook Building necessarily. I'm not saying that, that it wasn't that seeing some of those other wins.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping you can execute. Hope, hope you have that decision hasn't been cast in stone. Because there is a balance. If you make that decision to move people in there, they may never leave. So you, you got to say, what's more valuable for the, for the public? You know, small steps, interim steps. So I, I, I think you've got to weigh and balance these things and cost savings are important. I get it. But the opportunity costs are even more important.
Sebby? Alex, what date did you say that you were thinking that staff could move into the Badger Bronson Building?
We're looking at July 1, ideally 2026.
A year.
So it would, and I would say it's highly unlikely that if we put some staff in that building, they'd stay there.
So then it could be possible. Possible, but if they came there for a year, then when they moved into the Badger Bronson's building, then that building would be vacant. Because I was gone to Ireland and I missed the last POCAC meeting. So I don't know if it was discussed. Because originally you had said, when the Holbrook Building was, then maybe be moved for the Swan Town Marina offices. But now this is the first today that I've heard that it might be used to house other staff while you prepare that building. So is that not?
I, the, the. Further information from staff. You know, staff is supposed to be the one that's communicating.
The, the crux of the conversation is we use the Holbrook Building to meet internal needs or external needs, whether it's in that location or moved. I don't think that that's, that's, that's almost kind of somewhat irrelevant. We have to evaluate, do we use it to meet internal or external? And I did share with the committee that there, we were evaluating internal uses at the time it was exploring it for Swan Town. That hasn't, and use it to meet internal needs or not has not been answered yet.
But the crux of the conversation at the commission level is we need to be generating revenue so that we can pay for these public amenities, like managing two bathrooms is an immense cost. So I think it's not that it's not a good idea. It's that it's balancing it with the other policymaking that's happening. So that's where if we're all rowing in the same direction, we can, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the recommendation we made has to do with, you know, connecting with nonprofits in town. To help with the management of the building. To get people to recognize those costs and maybe address them, well, you know, in ways other than the port paying for it. You know, it, it, once you, once you make the decision to commit the building and you could have those conversations in an honest way with these nonprofits locally.
Quentin, I empathize with this recommendation because I was in the same, like, rowing, just in a different place, but hearing from nonprofits and going to Mike and saying, hey, we've got this vacant building and hearing from you. Is there an opportunity for a matchmaking here? I totally understand sort of the dynamism behind your recommendation. And that also there is a need for how we connect with our community, especially our marine folk facing nonprofits, that we, we can build better growing partnerships. So I think totally on target to have our community advisory committee bring ideas in that direction. I think one tension we have, whether you're in governance, like us on the commission or in this advisory role like you, is that there is, there are moments when like our role to come up with kind of new and better ways to fill different problems. We sometimes have to sit back from it and yield to internal operational recommendations that staff are running an institution. And Alex is our director. She's the only one who reports to us as a commission. If she comes and says, well, we have, you know, we have something else coming up from the ground level and I want, I'm thinking about it. And in fact, it's kind of within her, it's within her discretion at this moment, unless she's seeking to lease it long-term to someone. There's some level of a dance of discretion where, of respect. Kind of like, okay, well, let's let you figure that out. So the solution you offer might not be something that stays on the table because it might not be something where any of us want to run roughshod over whatever's cooking up with staff. But the problem you're trying to address is absolutely something that we're grateful you've elevated and, and should stay on the table if, even if we have to come up with other strategies. So that's what I, I want to encourage you to, if instead of the Holbrook Building, it sounds like what you've identified is a need to figure out better ways to support certain marine oriented nonprofits in, in accessing our public waterfront in a way that they have, that fits their capacity. And it's something I've been struggling with. I've been talking to Director Smith. Because for example, if we charge market rate and we determine market rate based on a theoretical value of any commercial parking spot for something, that may not really be the value of utilizing that in a different way for one of these nonprofits. So I think what we could do maybe is have a work product that instead of being focused on the Holbrook Building, asks you to dial out one and brainstorm together different mechanisms to address this. I have one idea. None of it's been discussed at the commission level because it's, it's your leadership that has actually started percolating that problem up to, to me at least, as something we want to solve for. So I hope you're hearing that even at this moment when there's news suddenly about the specific Holbrook Building. If I could just take one moment then and say, I similarly, like Joel, I, I, I think there's a reason that each of these three projects are addressing things at different places and it's because of their topic. So Bud Bay sediment cleanup, like there have been decisions made and the Deschutes restoration. And now it's a matter of like being able to untangle these technical decisions and articulate what's happening. So you are way on the integration of something that's already sort of operationalized and integration of that community conversation. I see the Destination Waterfront piece and I'm going to copy Commissioner Montana, which I always do. And if that is in the operational phase, like we are just kicking off our planning work. You've expressed with some frustration, that's understandable. I think community members have it too, about the delay of the integrated master planning work. And we've had a bigger focus on Site D and, and kind of how Site D then plays into the rest. And so it's important that we integrate with you on that waterfront committee, kind of how Site D fits in and where we're going. And then on the, the economic development one, that maybe some people see as, and it's, as a commission, maybe we could say, we don't want all these new policy things leveling up. For me, I see that as like new policy because we really haven't had a focus on economic development outside of the business lines or how you integrate new technologies into the current business lines. And so I love that as sort of the cycle that leads back up to new governance in that circle. And so I, I don't see any of these as being off the mark. I see them all hitting in different places and for a reason. And what you need then back from us as a commission is sort of the authorization that says, yes, we validate what you're proposing or yes, and, you know, here's the tweet. Don, you haven't even spoken yet. It's on you.
Well, you beat me to the punch because I had written something out I wanted to bring to your attention, which just maybe elaborate on what you said. My thinking is that we have all gone in somewhat different directions, but I think that's what we needed to do. I think that's what we need to do. And the terms I came up with for it was Destination Waterfront is more tangible in terms of the, they're actually coming up with projects and thinking about, about the holistic approach to public, public access. I think Bud Bay is really a lot about synthesis of taking disparate information and pulling it together in a way that's more digestible, which will help frame really with the policymaking spaces. And I think for economic development, we're about opportunities and just coming up with opportunities. And I don't think we have any expectation that you're going to go run with them, but you know, we're just kind of like throwing ideas out there and you know, some things may stick and some things may not. A lot of things will probably be too early.
Yeah. On, on Joel's comments and, and Don's and, and your own, Commissioner, I, I, I agree on, on, on the circle, I, I, idea. And, but I, I do want to make sure that things don't get too prescriptive from, from the commission to POCAC. Because I, I, I think one, one great role that can play is germinate a new ideas. I, and, and so if, if we do have a wild hair, like the, the electric wolf, welfare, which would turn out to be a, a good idea, but have POCAC look at it quickly and, and then obviously it, it was, it, it got interest. But it, it can start, start a POCAC and, and then, then bubble upwards.
My, my background is planning for 50 years of waterspry for, for the city of Seattle and other big cities, small towns, no matter what, as well as watershed planning for the future type of thing. So over the last year, basically I've been told, I'm sitting on the, the after planning process for the, I was, I was one of the people that was the peninsula. It started, stopped type process. Then the 2050 plan, front and center, which, which I agree with. I agree with all that. So, and then you hear the different things that are going on around the city, the seawater rise and the estuary and, and the dredging and cleanup. So all of those are, you know, floating around out here like this here. The way I approach that problem is say, okay, you have right now a, a sort of a framework of a master plan, 2050, which is, which is a good place to start. There's been a lot of good work gone into that. And then you, then you talk about the master plan for the peninsula because, but your, your impacting area is bigger than the peninsula. And that's the surrounding waterfront questions that we're talking about here. So you and your partner with City of Olympia and Lot and others on dealing with some of the other very significant downtown waterfront issues. So what's important from my perspective is you need to begin to frame those things into sort of your planning document, your strategy, your, your 50-year plan. And if you are going to change them, then you need to take actions that clarify for the rest of the world. Hey, we are shifting because of the legit, legitimate reasons, but when shift, you are shifting and articulating that so that other people get on the same page. So you're all getting on the same master planning. And how you interface with the City of Olympia, how you interface with the other government entity and so forth. That's, that's important to communicate that as each one of those shape everyone around the table and what we're doing in some way. My, my suggestion is you kind of lay out your master strategy, which eventually becomes the master plan, which and so we need, we need to know which, which set of decisions, past decisions that were made by your predecessors that we should pay attention to carefully. Which ones we should take under advisement, which ones we can ignore. And I don't care what they are, but, but if you don't communicate that, then I, I get to do it myself. And then that's just me then. So now, now it's, now it's not helping you create that master plan.
We've recently had more capacity. We brushed off Vision 2050 to see some of the things like the ferry had sort of been resurrected out of that plan, but there'd been like a gap in terms of a commission conversation when this happened, right? So I want to take your advice from your 50 years career and go to our director and ask, how are you envisioning, first of all, master plan is, means a few different things. But what I think you're saying is what is our strategic, our actual work plan, priority plan for action in the next five to 10 years?
Both a big picture, big objective, and that's your mission up there. Well, then, then you get closer and closer to today, it gets more detailed, more, more exacting. So yeah. Well, then, then you get closer and closer to today, it gets more detailed, more, more exacting. So, yeah.
And Alex, you have a vision for something you want to do with us on a retreat? Or what do you think is an actionable level strategic document that we either have or that we're planning to create?
Um, well, we have, I guess, a couple of thoughts here. Uh, one is, you know, Mike very correctly took Vision twenty fifty and really helped sort of fit what you all guys were already working on with the framework of Vision twenty fifty. And we want to be doing that with our work moving forward. We will be, we're working right now on a five-year action plan, because Vision twenty fifty is, like it says, take the next thirty years and build out five-year action plans, five-year chunks of how you're going to achieve all that's in there. So we're now five years in, we're working at sort of looking back at the past five years, what have we accomplished? Whether it was sort of consciously pursuant to Vision twenty fifty or not. And now we're looking at the next five years, twenty six through thirty. What is it that the port wants to accomplish to further the objectives of Vision twenty fifty? So we'll be bringing that to the commission in August, ideally, I think it's crossed. So to share with them how we, you know, what we see there, the priorities under Vision twenty fifty. On the master planning piece, uh, understand the frustration around the stop and starts for the peninsula master plan. But I think-
Which is a term of art, right? That's being used a little differently.
Yeah, and I think we really realized that it, the initial focus had been, how do we integrate sort of the, uh, what we'll develop out there with the Bud Inlet cleanup? Realized that that was more of a complicated thing to, um, and it might be better just to sort of separate the two, sort of so Bud Inlet cleanup will move forward. Appreciate the feedback you all are giving on that. And then the master plan will really be more of a land use plan for both the marine terminal and then also the, the properties along the east side there. And using TRPC as, uh, uh, folks who will actually do the planning work for us instead of, so.
And Alex, was that change in direction informed partly by like what happened at the federal level? You know, a change in funding available?
Yeah, and so, yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Part of the impetus behind hiring the consultants we did and sort of the, the hurry, the haste, it was that there are these big federal dollars that are out there and you, and that they're going to go away after like twenty twenty six. You guys need to get on this, develop your plan, because you need a plan to go get the federal dollars. And then of course, in election, the federal dollars kind of went away. And so, um, we're thinking a little more locally in terms of who we're using for consultants and also just really honing in on, um, on through the land use piece of that. And then have something that we can then ideally do a planned action EIS with, on, so that it's basically doing an EIS that looks at all this, what are the environmental impacts associated if we were to develop this out? And, uh, we partner with the City of Olympia in that one. So those are the planning documents that are on that.
I just, I'm not pushing back. I'm adding to some of this discussion about the circle. So it's not that stifling the creativity and input of the POCAC. It's that the worst thing we can do is have confusion as to what the work product and plan is in my mind, because that's a real disservice to the time you all are spending. So maybe it's ten percent of each committee's work plan is emerging ideas. But I was told when doing convening that people don't want to share their opinion, they want you to implement their opinion. And so if we're asking you for your opinion, we need to be careful about the question we're asking. Um, and so I would say destination waterfront, we should be asking you about specifics. Like, should we be putting in monkey bars or, like, I don't know, like, things that we actually can go, okay, great, you said monkey bars. We're going to do monkey bars, something where we can action on your, your feedback, um, rather than having you spend a lot of energy and effort on ideas that we're not going to be able to realize for one reason or another, which will be frustrating. Um, so in my mind, not shutting down the feedback from the POCAC, but really, let's make it a wavy line or a circle, but like there needs to be clear, clear um, connectivity around what we are requesting and what you are providing, so that you aren't wasting your time. And to me, that's one thing I really hope we can walk out of this meeting with is shared. Like, in my mind, it's implementation and communication that the POCAC, everything needs to roll up under that. And, and having a space for emerging technologies is cool, but we need, I, I think we need agreement on that, um, or, or changing it, whatever the agreement is. Otherwise, we're just going back to confusion of like, tell us what you think. You have a bunch of smart people and then we're stepping on each other with staff and commission and I don't want to do that again. I feel.
Sue, I just, I, so one thing that would help us, I think, is this is a whole new commission and you probably don't feel like you're new. Because what's been two years now since five members and um, there's a lot of history with it just didn't work, but you guys have the opportunity. Biggest opportunity and change for you doing it. And this is a good example of how you're doing it. What would be helpful is, if you're going to do some kind of retreat or planning process, coming up with your principles of action. Who are you as a commission? How are you different in previous commissions? What are your, what are your principles of operation? You want to, you want to enhance that public access and economic while preserving environmental activity area, which is a big one for me. Um, I represent a lot of environmentalists in this community. So what are those principles? And then we work under those principles. Everything we do is kind of, you know, cemented into knowing who our commission is and who who we're trying to help. That would help, uh, that would help me a lot. I know that. The other thing I'm concerned about is, um, is staff time. We, we work a lot with staff and I know staff are busy. And I don't know how much time is allocated for us to be with staff. And it can be overwhelming. I know Sean has done a ton of work. And I'm sure Mike has, um, and, and Jonathan before Sean and me. I'm sure they have other things they need to be doing. So how does that work operationally?
If I can just, I want to reinforce what Commissioner Harding said, because she's concerned about the POCAC about you wasting your time as a volunteer and then feeling frustrated or like you've made commitments to the community. And you're bringing up now what you can see, which is the possible waste of staff resources if it's just more light than heat, you know, some project that's not going to move forward.
But see, that, that's what I'm talking about, is if we know where you are, what you as a body have as your principles of operation, and then we're working under those, um, it helps us work better with staff and maybe not take up so much of their time.
We can flush that out. I think our principles are embedded in our policies, our, the, the actions that we take. And so if we say we're dedicating this, our budget essentially, like, show me what you care about, show me your budget. So if we say we're going to spend X dollars on Bud Inlet, then that's the implementation. If we say we're going to spend X dollars on signs of Billy Frank Jr. Trail.
And we'll say Vision twenty fifty has three sort of overarching policy things that the port is, is going to focus on the next, you know. And I think those are also helpful and sort of, you know, guideposts around.
I think one, I think instead of being hung up on policy versus implementation, I get that that framework really works. If, if it's like, for me, one of the challenges is the communications planning. That's almost like, because, because staff hasn't gotten to, like, you're filling a void, but that definitely would be core implementation work, in my opinion, and we just happen to have a resource that has the ability to help fill that void. For me, three of us campaigned on climate innovation, like wanting to bring some changes in how we address climate.
I think Commissioner I L. did as well.
At least three. So I'm more aware of the three who were, you know, at the same time, so probably four. And so for me, that piece, although it's something we want to see operationalized and implemented, I don't see a way to move that forward without some of this outside thinking that I think the POCAC can bring. So maybe the issue is we have to be really defined. If there's a few new chunks we're going to take on for investigation that aren't yet like a budget item, because we're not going to staff someone on it yet. Maybe as long as there's, there's a real agenda that we've adopted as a commission of five and we said, yeah, we're devoted, we're willing to give up some staff time in supporting the POCAC on this, because it's a priority, as opposed to just any random list of five things. Now, I heard from Anthony, hey, don't cabin us too tightly. For me, I'm a policy nerd and I love if he just wanted to do like landscape, um, learn about what's happening in other places. Like, I love that. I would find that very enriching. But I hear you when you say, if it leads to people feeling frustrated because they think they've got a plan and we don't, like, I don't, that's not good. So I don't know how to address that, Anthony.
Yeah, well, I, as, as, as I believe you mentioned, uh, uh, maybe leaving a, a ten percent wiggle room. Where POCAC and, and especially subcommittees bring up ideas, uh, or bring in speakers, uh, I, and, and get thoughts terminating things that, that wouldn't take a lot of staff time, uh, because, and, and I think with economic development, uh, Mike has been fantastic, but I don't, we called on, on him a lot to say, hey, Mike, you know, do a bunch of stuff, rather, we, we've been bringing speakers in, uh, and, and discussing different. Uh, uh, and so, and always been helpful, Mike, too. But, uh, uh, so it's an add rather than a subtract.
It can be, but there was, it caused unrest on the, on the commission, because I happen to have joined you for that particular meeting, which wasn't built in for commissioners to. So it turned out that I was more clued in to what was happening than the whole commission. And so even that will take staff, like, and I can't go brief staff. I mean, I can go brief staff. I can't go brief through other commissioners without it being like another meeting on what's happening at POCAC, even though POCAC's a public meeting, right? So, so there's some connections we haven't built. I want to be mindful of time and ask a question. We have ten minutes. Right, we have three work plans before us and some thinking among the commission that we really want to hone this in and make sure that there's the right fit. The, do my commissioners think that there's a, a path for like notating up kind of the work plan and selecting out what works? Or do you think there's more of a procedural level conversation that has to happen first?
I, I think that there are seeds within each of the work plans that we could build upon and, and wi- within the context of the conversation that we had today. So I think that there's been a lot of good work that's gone into this as far as what you all have seen as the priorities. And I think that we can align those with the governance and operations that's already happening at the organization level and tailor the questions a little bit more, so that we're all rowing in the same direction. So in my mind, us having another conversation about these and then getting back to the POCAC more specifically, okay, maybe we don't want you looking at, uh, investigating oper- opportunities to diversify marine terminal operations, because we think that that is a staff thing, uh, as an example. Um, so, but we do think that you should be doing one of these other things. And so I, I think it's a good starting point. I mean, I, I circled something on each of the work plans. I think Billy Frank Jr. Trail enhancements is an easy place to start of something we could execute on, have the public win, like, we're here. I hear you glad and clear of what the issue is, but the, filling the question around the solution is what we need to do.
Commissioner I L.
Well, I think, I think, well, the three, the three presentations, the three, um, committees, I think have done, have done great work. You guys, uh, I, I think is outstanding. Um, I think, I think one thing that I, I'm just sitting here and keeps going through my mind is with, uh, with implementation comes cost. And how, how, how we're going to make sure that we are, um, we have the resources and you are, are able to actually follow through with the recommendations. Um, I just, you know, I was thinking back about, you guys did some great work, a great report on shore power. For example, we, for whatever reason, we weren't able to pull the trigger on, on that. There was a lot of reasons we weren't able to pull the trigger on that, but, um, you know, I think that's, that's something, so, you know, um, keeping in mind that in order for us to implement this thing, we're, or implement recommendations by the POCAC, we, we will need some in- input from, uh, from staff as far as, uh, cost and resources that it's going to take to implement these things. Uh, you know, improving the, improving the trails and adding maybe a playground somewhere is maybe, uh, 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 a low, um, a, a low initial cost, then you've got maintenance, um, um, costs associated with that long term. I think we just need to understand all of those things too. But as far as the, the, the work that's done here, it's outstanding work and we should, we should, we should follow through with it.
Sorry, can I ask a question? Uh, one thing that just popped up is the sense of ownership. We do these small cities grants where we say, what do you need, small cities? And we say, here's resources. What if we did something like that with the POCAC? What if we said, we're going to dedicate ten thousand dollars to whatever you guys think is, I'm just throwing this out there, here's budget. Like, but you guys think it's, it's the storyboard? Or it's the signs or what? I know she can't help her face sometimes, but.
So many times.
But that would Okay. Um, that would give you guys some ownership into decision making and, um, I don't know. Jasmine loves that idea.
I'm not a litigator. Darlene.
One step past that idea is what if you got some nonprofits that would be willing to come in and take ownership of the maintenance, maybe even putting in the playground, so you don't have to pay for labor. Um, and you would dedicate it to the bird lovers of the North Point or, or something like that. I mean, is that a possibility instead of not even considering it? It might be leaving money on the table.
You know, I think any of, any, any ideas like that are, are certainly viable and worth looking into, yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Something was mentioned about the maintenance of bathrooms. Um, if you had a nonprofit in there that was going to be willing to clean the bathrooms, then you don't have to pay for maintenance of the bathrooms.
It's just thinking out of the box.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, if it's no, I understand the word. There are possibilities here that we can utilize to, to make some of these things happen.
I think we would all like to get to yes.
Yeah, for sure. Um, I think what I would like to ask then, just building on Commissioner I L.'s comment about the staff resource is maybe there is a look at this, even that, that we get a staff recommendation of pieces from the proposed work plan that they find helpful and any kind of, um, sideboards that they would uh, perceive as valuable to help navigate expectations, so that we're addressing especially Commissioner Harding's concerns, but all of us share those concerns. And that doesn't, the staff recommendation would just help us as a commission inform kind of what our ask is, um, back to each of these subcommittees. I know it's asking more, it's again, it goes to staff resource, but because it affects work that will happen over a year, and we don't have to move forward right today, it could become part of, first, we work on it with our strategic planning and then you get, it comes out then.
If you guys take a break, do you, do you have a July meeting or an August meeting or?
We don't have an August.
I think we typically skip August.
Yeah, they have a July fifteenth meeting.
Okay, so, I mean, we maybe have some time to
And when you say work on this, you mean?
I would say both parts. So it's having staff go through the different subcommittees and what can we do, what is possible, but may be reserved for internal operations at this point, bringing those recommendations back. But then also the greater POCAC resolution, how can we add to that to ensure that the work is being assigned and reviewed and assigned and somehow reviewed and implemented?
Uh, review, assigned to staff and then reviewed by staff?
Exactly.
Well, like you're, the thing you were saying where we're going to start attending the
But, so the commissioner will report, but then what staff responsibility will be there to try and review the work or bring it back to the commission. That's not clearly defined in the resolution yet, but.
Is there time to talk about this at the strategic planning retreat for, as it rolls up into our?
We can, we can make time. I mean, I think, um, yeah, we may add a little to the day.
yeah, we may add a little to the day. Um, but yeah, we could talk about this.
Cause I think part of this, the staff capacity thing.
It's a real.
And the, the cost is embedded in all of that decision-making and this is part of that. So and that's in August?
Yeah, we're trying to schedule it for the first through the 13th or 13th. I forget which one of you has issues on 14th, but yeah, so we're trying to schedule it sometime in that early 10 period. That was the doodle.
Mr. Havens, we haven't heard much from you and I see a smile on your face. Is there anything you wanted to say?
Just, uh, there's about 25 things that are going on between the first and the 13th of August and half of those are our family's vacations.
This is true. This is the difficulty we're running into right now. Yeah.
Mike's got his hand up. Chair.
Take us home.
Well, I don't know if this is going to take you home or not, but, um, I, I, I just want to say from a staff perspective, because I know getting close to the end of this. There's 15 of you sitting around there. 15 individual voices, thoughts, opinions, um, ideas, idea generator, all of you. One of the most hurtful, painful things of being a staff person, and this isn't just me as this conversation with other folks, is an allegation from the public that it's the staff that are leading the organization, that they are manipulating things. We want to implement your direction. We want to implement your guidance, truly deeply. That's why I do this work. So it gets hard to do that when there are 15 individual voices. It's really hard. So it's synthesizing those into actionable directions. I love Sue, what you talked about, about principles. That's what I try to do is take the voices of many, combine those into principles so that I can work with my team and say, hey, we may not get it word for word right, but if we get the principal concepts of what they're talking about and give us guidance of where we want to go, it's a little hot, like we'll get there. Um, so I would just, this was a great conversation and this is the frankly, the healthy, one of the I think this is the healthiest conversations between these two that I've ever seen. And so, but I still think that there's some work on how, how do we do that interface? And how is the staff going to implement and manage what you're all talking about? I will tell you, I started five months ago. I already have 10 projects and two departments to oversee. So.
Folks told me we can't work on the brewery.
Yeah, we, um, uh, so the, the, the conversation about capacity is real. Um, but if there's clarity and guidance given to us, we can do it. Um, new ideas coming up every time we meet scares me. Um, uh, but, but tying into an overarching vision, an overarching set of principles, that's how your staff are going to be able to sort of move this forward. So I just say, thank you for this conversation. You guys are making awesome headway. The closer the, the, the bodies can work instead of, to get and, and to consolidate into pieces that we can bite and move forward on, that's better. So thank you.
And I take one thing from that. We have three proposed plans here and it's not clear that we should go forward. You know, that every commissioner wants to go forward with all of them at all. But could we have a commissioner step up to adopt? Each of us adopt one plan just to, to bring recommendations to the group, but that commissioner will work with staff to understand their concerns, but also will work with the subcommittee and with, with the work being brought back in August. Is that something that seems like a viable path forward as we close this meeting? You're open to that? Is there a commissioner? Is there a commissioner who'd like to work with the Bud Bay Sedimentation? Bud Bay Inlet Subcommittee? And, and so no decisions, just to make a recommendation back to the whole room of how we're going to proceed. Is there a commissioner who would like to work with the Destination Waterfront Subcommittee?
Maybe because I'm on the subcommittee for the commission, that would be an appropriate one for me to work on.
Do you have time to argue? Okay. And then is there a commissioner, um, Maggie, would you like, wait, who is Maggie Bob Me? There's still the Economic Development Subcommittee. May I partner with him on the Economic Development one? Maggie, do you want to partner with that one?
I'll get your feedback.
I'm like, if I have to partner, then.
So at least we now have a little bit of a mechanism that isn't batting it back to staff. I, we'll see where it, where it takes us, but we are really sincere about, we know there's talent that you bring and all the work and some of your presentations have been the most valuable I've seen. So I don't want to lose that by having other kinds of work plans that aren't presentations, but, um, but we will, we owe it back to you to do this work and, and we'll work with Alex to get, um, an update, return to you scheduled. Probably around August. Well, we'll probably be doing our, our work on it. And so, okay, so in September probably, and I apologize for the time delay of that.
So who's assigned to what? I didn't.
Sarah's assigned to the committee. Sarah, Bob is the lead for Economic Development, but he's agreed to partner with me.
I would happily defer to you if you want to do it.
I'd happily partner with you. Has promised, has agreed to lead the and Maggie, are you working first? Thank you, everyone, for this time together.
I'll bring this thing.
Running a little bit late. That's right. We will have. Um, that, do we have any other, do we have to do something formal besides say?